The time is seven o'clock. I will now call the order of a special town meeting on November 7th, 2023.
The meeting is called the order. Back in town, Clark, is the warrant legal?
Yes, it is.
Okay, the warrant is legal. And at this point, I'd like to have a motion to accept visitors to the town meeting. Joseph Layden, town manager, Dennis Westgate, DPW director, Michael Antonellis, the director of land use inspectional services, Maria Cheravino, director of recreation, Brian Mazur, KP Law, Jessica Gomez, collective treasurer, Paul Mashan, he works at the town hall, Kenny Costa, finance director, and at the moment, that's all we have. Is there a motion to accept visitors?
No, Mr. Moderator.
Second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. And that will be the last time until the end when we're gonna have yays and nays. Because I've already done it. I already broke the card rule, okay? I do this all the time. So if you haven't been to meetings for a few years, we now use cards for yays and nays. So as the meeting goes through, we'll have a green card will be a yay, a nay will be the red. Okay, I'll do a quick look and see what it looks like. I'm not gonna count all the cards or anything. I'll just look and see. And if it looks like I can 100% make the call, I will. If I can't, then we'll have a standing vote like we used to do a long time ago. But since we started using these things, we haven't had to have any standing votes. So we'll see what happens tonight. Okay, good. So chairman of the board of selectmen. Can we do a stand for the pledge, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Everyone rise? Deputies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So as I look around the crowd, most faces look familiar, but there's always a few new folks that are here, and that's great. Thank you so much for coming. When you came in, you probably received a blue sheet. And that blue sheet talks about the flow of the meeting and how it goes from beginning to end and all that. So essentially, what it boils down to is that we have a warrant that's been posted, and it's been online. These are the articles. These are the things we're gonna talk about tonight. If, as we're going through, you wish to speak, you're gonna have to walk up to that microphone right there. And when I call on you, you can say, "Mr. Moderator, my name is so-and-so. I live at such-and-such street." You don't have to do that once after that. You don't have to keep saying "street." But the first time you come up to speak, we would like you to do that. And then you'll speak to whatever it is that's on the floor at the time. You can either make a motion, make a amendment, do whatever. But you can essentially just do one thing at a time. Speak to the issue if you want, and so on and so forth. One thing to keep in mind is that if, let's say, someone has said something about a motion, and you really disagree with that tremendously, that's okay. You come up to the microphone, and you state your name and address, and you say, "Mr. Moderator, I have a different opinion than the previous speaker who just spoke on this issue." You're not gonna say, "Mr. Moderator, Joe Smith doesn't have any clue what he's talking about." That's not how we do things here. And we will never do things like that here. So you speak to the issue, you do it politely, you do it appropriately, and after we're all done talking about whatever the motion is that we're talking about, we'll then vote on it. And that's how we do things. Other than that, there's really not a whole lot else to talk about. There are certain articles here where, before we get to those articles, I will say a little bit of something about that because things are, you know, either a little bit different or there's what I like to call teachable moments that I'd like to throw out there for you folks. So if there's nothing else, I think we're ready to start with Article 1. And here's one of those teachable moments, thanks. Before we have the motion for Article 1, I just want to let people know, this is one of those articles that comes up once in a while where we have previous year's bills, let's say, that are being paid with this year's money. So the state of Massachusetts, a long time ago, said, "Hey, if you wanna do something like that, and it's at a special town meeting, it requires a nine tenths majority vote." Think about it, that's 90% have to say yes for it to happen. It's a high threshold. If this sort of thing happens at an annual meeting, it's a four fifths vote. Now, you might be thinking, "But why did they do that?" I don't know. They decided to do that a long time ago. That's how it is, okay? So Article 1 is that kind of a motion. So I just want you to be aware of that before we start. Okay, thank you. Board of Selectmen, does somebody have a motion for Article 1?
Yes, I do, Mr. Moderator. Article 1, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $2,034.86 from free cash to pay unpaid bills for the fiscal year 2023 as follows. Teshiva Financial Services in the amount of $1,385.69. Nektel One in the amount of $529.41. And Ready Fresh in the amount of $119.76.
Second?
Second.
Move in seconded, FinCon?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. Any need to reread the motion? Seeing none, any discretion on the motion? Okay, therefore, let's get your cards out. All those in favor, hold up the green cards. Two, down, all opposed, hold up the red cards. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Article 2, yes. Okay, thank you very much. Good. So just as a reminder, if someone is sitting in the non-voting section, if they're non-voters, that's where they need to be, and that's good. They can't vote, but if you're a voter in the non-voting section, then you need to move to a section where you can vote. So I just want folks to know that. This is the non-voting section. So if you're a voter in this section, please move to another place where it's not a big deal. So sorry, I don't mean to embarrass anybody. I just wanted you to be aware of that. So no problem. So that's right. There's an answer, yeah, you fell set, right? Thank you very much. Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Article 2, motion for Article 2, Board of Selectmen.
Yes. Article 2, I move that the town vote to amend the town's operating budget for fiscal year 2024 commencing on July 1st, 2023 by transferring $65,976.00 from account 010030052005621 entitled "Mend and Upton Operating Expenses as Follows: $15,000.00 to account 010012251005100 entitled Selectmen Wages and $20,000.00 to account 010015251005110 entitled Personnel Wages for the purpose of cemetery and facilities department reorganization and $30,976.00 to account 010019254005421 entitled Town Building Expenses."
Second?
Second.
Move in seconded, FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCon? Any discretion? That's an explanation up there for those who have that. Okay, any? No? Okay. Seeing no, no discretion, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by majority. So move on Article 3. Mr. Cost, I'm gonna ask you a question. If we were to make these motions and just say where the money's coming from and going to without the numbers, would that be okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So I think it just makes things easier, more smooth. Great, thank you very much. So Board of Selectmen, are you all set with that then? So for the motion cards, just read where it's coming from, where it's going to, and as long as we're not going to someplace different, keep the numbers on the cards, right? And the accountant's gonna be okay with that? Is the board okay with it if we do that? It just makes it flow a little bit more smoothly. So is that okay with you guys? Okay? No, that, okay, that's fine. FinCon, you're okay with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. And I know you guys will be fine with that, sort of going through all the numbers like that. Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay, Article 3. Motion for Article 3?
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain for general municipal purposes, including but not limited to, for a pumping station, a permanent easement upon parcel of land containing 5,625 square feet, more or less, as shown on a plan on file with the town clerk, on property located at 41 Milbrook Street, assessors map 021-121, and to transfer the sum of $57,600 from free cash, including all costs incidental and related thereto, to fund said acquisition, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this acquisition, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall in its discretion deem reasonable, and to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate such acquisition.
Second, move in seconded. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action. Capital Budget Committee?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the Capital Budget Committee, thank you. Just so you know, because this is an acquisition of land, it does require a two-thirds majority vote. Any discretion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all hold up the green cards. Down, all opposed, hold up the red cards. Passes by a two-thirds majority. Article 4.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain for general municipal purposes, including but not limited to, for a pedestrian bridge, a permanent easement upon parcel of land containing 228 square feet, more or less, as shown on a plan on file with the town clerk, on property located at 8 Broke Street, assessors map 201-059, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $3,800, including all costs incidental and related thereto, to fund said acquisition, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this acquisition, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall in its discretion deem reasonable, to take all related actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate such acquisition.
Second?
Second.
Move in seconded, FinCon?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action, just like the last one, since it's an acquisition of land, it requires a two-thirds majority vote. Capital Budget Committee?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the Capital Budget Committee. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those... Now this time, hold them up higher, folks. Will you hold your cards up, please? So all those in favor, hold the green card up. Good. All those opposed, red card out. Okay, this does pass by a two-thirds majority vote. Article 5.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $114,000.00 from free cash to fund professional administrative services to support the integration of existing physical and electronic cemetery records to a new cemetery management software, reconciliation of records with physical burial plots and other associated research and administrative services that may be deemed necessary by the Director of Public Works in consultation with the Cemetery Commission.
Second.
Moved in seconded. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the FinCon? Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Thank you. Just state your name and address, please.
My name's Sue Roker, live at 2 Cape Way. And my question in regard to this, is there a timeframe for implementing this? Is this something that will occur over the next fiscal year, or is there a plan to extend this over several years?
Okay, great. Good question. Okay?
Mr. Moderator?
Yep, sure, please. Good answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Westgate, Director of Public Works. This has been worked on since 2021, when an RFP went out by the Cemetery Commission. So we've already obtained updated quotes. This would happen immediately the work would begin, and I would say it would take, within the first six months, most of it would be implemented, and within a year, everything would be completed.
Great, good. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those hold up the green cards. Very good. Now, all those opposed, hold up the red cards. The motion carries by majority. Article 6.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $27,000.00 from free cash to be used to install four solar-powered, permanently-mounted speed radar signs, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Second, moved in seconded. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Favorable action by the FinCon, any discussion?
Hi, here, I'm in the 22nd, I'm Robby. Can you tell me where the four signs are going to be placed?
Great. Where are the four signs going? Anybody got the...
Please.
Chief? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Bradley, Police Chief. There'll be two signs on 141, one on Milbrook Street coming into Upton Center, one on Main Street also coming into Upton Center, one on Main Street as you come into West Upton Center, and one on Hockford Ave., New North, as you come into West Upton Center. Those are the four locations.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green card. Good. All opposed, hold up the red card. Motion carries by majority. Article 7. Motion?
Yes. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000.00 from free cash to be used to conduct engineering studies, reports, audits, and design plans to mitigate speeding on local roads, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second? Is your second?
Second.
Okay, second. FinCon recommendation?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the FinCon? Any discussion on this?
Sorry.
That's all? Okay. Let me get something straight here. Never apologized, but wanted to speak at town meeting. Really?
That's why I'm like you as town moderator.
Well, okay. Well, thank you, but that's how it's supposed to work, so thank you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Chief President, I'm probably gonna have you come down again, but I was just curious what roads you were looking to do the speed studies on.
Okay.
Sorry.
No? It's all right.
So the first road is Christiansville Road, which has been identified by the Board of Selectmen, DPW Director for Speed Survey and Engineering Study, and the additional funds are for future studies as issues come up.
Okay? Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green card. Okay, put it down. All opposed, hold up the red cards. The motion passes by a majority. Article 8. Oh, okay. Before we have the motion for Article 8, let me explain real quick what's gonna happen here. The article for Article 8 talks about two distinctly different buildings, and each one has its own fund, and each one's gonna be dealt with differently. So the sponsors of the article, which is the Board of Selectmen, have decided that they wanna have two separate motions on this. So you'll talk about one of them, make a motion, second, FinCon recommendation, discussion, vote. Then after that, we'll go to the other building, there'll be a second motion, second, blah, 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 all the way down. Okay? And since it's their article, they have the authority to do this in two separate motions. We've done this in the past on a number of things, so it's not like they need permission to do this. They have the authority to do it because it's their article. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. So Board of Selectmen, which one do we want to do first?
The first motion for these two articles is gonna be the article supporting Holy Angels.
Great.
So I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $62,150.00 from free cash for the purpose of cleaning, painting, maintaining, and repairing the exterior of Holy Angels, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second?
Second.
FinCon recommendation?
Favorable.
Thank you. Favorable action by the FinCon? Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Racket?
Steve Racket from 20 Mountain Lane. Could I ask the Selectmen if they can tell us how much money we've already spent on Holy Angels?
Okay. Do you have a sense for how much money's been spent so far? Does this include what it costs to buy it, or just work?
Maintenance.
Does the Board of Selectmen have any sense for what that number might be? Hello? Mr. Layden?
Hello, Jill Layden, town manager. To date, the only expenses have been regarding the patching of the roof, which was about $2,500. That was completed last year. And then within existing operational budgets, DPW has had to go into securing the building. There hasn't been large appropriations for maintenance for any other activities in the last couple of years.
Okay? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Racket, follow-up question?
Yes. I just wanted to ask, is the town...
Hold close, I can hear you.
The town has received a $50,000 grant to assess whether or not the building is rehabilitable, capable of being rehabilitated. So my question is, why wouldn't we wait until that study is done before spending any more money on it? It's possible that once that study is finished, the conclusion may be that it's not worth rehabilitation. So it seems like this motion is potentially throwing good money after bad. And so could a member of the Board or the town manager speak to the grant that we received?
So there's a grant that could be received. How should that affect, one way or another, whether or not to spend money on how long the building is? So is...
Mr. Moderator, Director of Land Use, Mike Antonos.
Very good. Mike, go ahead.
Director of Land Use and Services, Mike Antonos. Just for clarity regarding the $50,000, that is to do a development study, so research into the redevelopment potential of the structure, but that doesn't necessarily include the rehabilitation in the sense that it was described. So not like, there's been, I'm aware of a structural report that I think has been done initially on that building. This sort of study will not include that sort of information. It will be for the potential redevelopment of it, not necessarily the nitty-gritty details of whether or not something is structurally sound or things like that.
Okay, understand? Yep? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, sir?
Ed Phillips, Oak Drive, the Historical Commission. First, I want to add to what Jill Layden said about any maintenance. There has been virtually no maintenance done to that building, I believe, since it was purchased from a contractor who bought it from the church.
Yep.
Other than a minor amount that was spent last week to repair, we can move to preserve it. Secondly, I would add that the Historical Commission has deemed that building, as well as motion 2, as important historical buildings to the community of Upton, and that every effort should be made to try and save this building if possible. So I applaud the $50,000 grant that's to be used for evaluation of what that building could be used for down the road. My two questions in the article, the way it appears, are there any plans to replace the roof on the building, and are there any plans to replace the missing storm windows that protect the stained glass?
So that's with respect to what this money might do? Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay, so does this money include roof, storm windows? Mr. Layden?
Mr. Moderator, so to the previous speaker, the work that is proposed is basically to do cleaning of the exterior, work such as the roof or any other material changes would have to come back to town meeting for another future request. Working at special town meeting, working with the Historical Commission, we did have an article that was approved that provided some funding for exterior preservation, and during that special town, that town meeting, we did identify, like trying to protect and put back in place the storm windows and other work. So there is that additional funding that's in place to do that type of work.
Okay, thank you. Hope that answers the question. Follow-up to that?
Yes, follow-up. I'm looking for more clarification. You've got a number of $62,000. Where did the number come from? What's the intent of what you're doing with $62,000? Does cleaning the building doesn't seem to be the most important need that that building has over the new roof and protecting the stained glass windows where storms have been lost over the years.
Okay, so now let's ask the question from the point of view, what will that money be used for? Anybody? Dennis?
I solicited a quote, so I have your information.
Your?
So this is Holy Angels we're speaking of?
Yes, Holy Angels.
So this is a pressure washing of the entire outside of the structure, scraping of all the loose paint, priming, and two coats of paint.
Oh, okay. So basically, painting the building, essentially. Okay. Good. Next?
Craig Wine, East Hazel Time Road. I wanted to state that the Historical Commission took a vote to see if it would pass for a favorable action, and it did in fact pass, so it has a favorable action from the Historical Commission. And the Economic Development Commission, uh, Committee took a vote and to see if it would pass for favorable action, and it did pass for the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, thank you for letting us know that. Historical Commission and the Economic Development Commission both voted favorably to do this?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Ross?
Capital Budget.
Capital Budget?
We actually have a favorable action for that, but I also want to add at the end of our statement, that in our discussion, this is capital budget, we're talking about Holy Angels specifically, it is one of the most, it's one of the three or four buildings that is part of the town's historic district, that is filed under the State Reserve Preservation Office, as well as the National Park Service. So I think, and we, our committee also had a discussion about, like, we did not do something on the buildings, continue for official repair, that if the town did go in the direction of not doing something, taking them down, the cost to do just demolition of the mega site clearly would be very significant cost compared to this. So our committee had a discussion about that this seems to be a very reasonable expense for you to vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ross?
Dave Ross, 23 Plumley Road. First question, why are we not using CPC funding for historical purposes?
Good. That's a fair question. The question is, why not CPC? I don't know if that's, if someone can give us a quick answer to that?
I think especially this scope of work, it would be quickly maintained, and any future work that may be more rehabilitation, CPC would definitely be a funding source that should be considered.
Okay, so I guess it's because it's maintenance, and that's not allowed for CPC money? Is that the answer to the question? Okay. Mr. Ross?
The town has owned this building for a long time. We've issued two RFPs for town center focused around this building. I wrote the majority of both of those RFPs. Not a single person has responded with a plan for this building. $60-plus thousand is a lot of money to invest because we have an emotional attachment to an old building. What is the plan? $60,000 buys us a police cruiser. $60,000 is a teacher's salary for one year. I would argue both of those have much more of an impact on the residents of this town. When I lived in Grafton, and started to take it back to another town, but the town decided to begin to invest in the old town hall in Grafton, the town ended up spending millions of dollars over 15 years. But it was originally sold as what we just need, 150,000. Well, now that we did the roof well, we gotta do fire escapes now. This is the beginning of a long, expensive path we're going down, especially if we don't have a plan in place for what's gonna become of this building. I'm a huge fan of the New England history. I love everything that this town has to offer. This building's, what, 175 years old? But we need to be reasonable. Everybody is feeling the pinch in their wallet right now. Is this the best use of $60,000 because the building will look nice? Do we have anybody that's nibbling at this? Do we have any potential idea of what this facility's gonna become? I understand the idea of, like, upkeep the building, it leaves options available to us. I understand the idea of, like, upkeep the building, it leaves options available to us. But we've had that for the past decade. And everything points to economic hardship coming up in the next year or two. If nobody has bid on this in the last five, 10 years, why do we think that's all of a sudden going to happen because we did some lipstick on this pavement?
Okay, so this is one of those things where you can give a short answer or a long answer. I think a short answer is better, but, no, the question is, what's the plan for the building? That is a legitimate question, okay? It has been there for a long time, so therefore, if someone could give us a reasonable answer with regard to the long-term plans for the building, again, not a long answer, but one that's sufficient. Thank you.
I'll do my very best.
Absolutely, great.
The plan for the Holy Angels hasn't changed. This isn't a commitment. This is literally about cleaning up the downtown area that we all live in. This is the center of our community. We've spent the past many years with many town votes purchasing an old building that had a condemned giant red X on it and turning that into a grassy area with picnic table. We obtained a parcel that was filled with old campers and ski mobiles and landscaping equipment, and we cleaned that up. We renovated an old parking lot and an old playground and put in a new community center and a new playground that people are using. And we're doing the same thing with the Restine Building. We're doing the same thing with Holy Angels. This isn't about making a commitment to this building in the long run. This is simply about pride in our town center to attract businesses, to attract people, to make our center walkable and an enjoyable aesthetically pleasing place as we all use it and go to the community center, walk around and do our shopping and eating, and that's the intent here. There isn't a clear long-term plan. We're putting out requests and ideas. The first two RFPs didn't work. We're trying different things now. We've got an expression of interest that's coming up next where we ask people for ideas. There's renovation possibilities, but there are also myriad other possibilities. Those decisions, we just don't know because we haven't found the right partner to enable us to do that.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you very much. Okay, more discussion, yeah.
Oh, I covered most of it. Lynn McKay, 9 Dollar Street. I just wanted to, I guess, just add a little bit of color, which is that there's so much promise with a building like this. And was it appropriate for the RFP and development, you know, that had a much broader scope and was much more targeted towards the developer? Yes, it failed. That's a blessing because we get to hold on to it and it gets to evolve into something that will make a huge contribution to the community. There are ideas. I have a proposal in front of the board. And whether or not that, it's just one idea, there's an idea immediately to, you know, how we can seek funds for redoing the inside. And so it's not, it's not what it was, Dave. It's a whole different, it's a whole different thing now. It's exciting. It's an opportunity. There's, it's, there's a breadth of fundraising that can be attained. This is literally just, let's just shore it up so that we can go out and fundraise. So we can, you know, look for some ideas. There's an idea right now, something that would actually turn it into a property center. So there are things that, you know, you may not be aware of, but that are real and viable. And they don't start with a development group. They start with just residents. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Oh, good discussion. Yes, please.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I think the bottom line too is this comes down to preventive maintenance. We all own properties, whether we want to or not. We have to paint and maintain the exterior so that it paints the integrity of the structure. And that's really, it's not just cosmetic. It's trying to maintain the integrity of the buildings until the town's department decides what to do with it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so you've heard the back-and-forth discussion about this. This is about essentially painting the outside of Holy Angels Church in the manner that Mr. White stated described. You've heard reasons for, reasons not to. So that's good. Good debate. So, again, hold them up high. All those in favor, hold up the green cards. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. The motion passes by a majority. Okay. Second half of Article 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
This is a similar motion for the Restine Building, the old library building. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $47,850.0 from free cash for the purchase of cleaning, painting, maintaining, and repairing the exterior of the Restine Building, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second move in, seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the Fincom. Any discussion on this, yes, sir?
Craig Wine, Posty, Hazelton Road. Again, favorable action from the Historical Commission and favorable action from the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, thank you. And the...
CPC is favored.
CPC, thank you very much. Okay, we do have some folks coming to the microphone.
Okay, the Bronx District Recycle, it just occurs to me that, I think Article 9 should have come before Article 8. If we're going to decide whether or not to rehabilitate Restine Building to make it favorable to lease, maybe we should have decided on the motion to lease first. Is that possible to reverse the order that I've put in the statement?
To be honest with you, there is a process by which we could do it. It's really kind of long and convoluted. And to be honest with you, it might be easier to just decide, like we did with the last one, what to do. And then when we get to nine, we'll decide what to do.
Yeah, before.
Fair point. I understand.
I should have asked you earlier. Thank you.
That's okay. Yep, no problem. Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, so seeing none, all those hold up the green cards if you're in favor of. Okay, thank you. Red cards if you're opposed. And again, passes by majority. Okay, Article 9. Which deals with the issue that, the question that just was raised. Anybody got the motion for that? Okay, thank you.
I move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease in accordance with Mass. General Law provisions, Chapter 30B. The first floor of the building known as the Norton Restine Building, located at 2 Main Street, shown on assessing map 201-073, with such sum or sums and upon such conditions determined by the board of selectmen to be in the best interest of the town and to authorize the board of selectmen to execute any and all instruments, including leases or other agreements, and take all other actions necessary or appropriate to effectuate the vote taken here random.
Second move in, seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable action, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable action by the Fincom. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Well, favorable recommendation?
Craig Wine, Posty, Hazelton Road. Favorable action from the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, thank you. Favorable action by the Economic Development Committee. We don't need anything from the, from the capital budget on this, right? Okay, good. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, hold up the red cards. Passes by majority. Article 10, CPA. We've got a bunch of CPAs coming up right now. Go ahead.
Article 10 is, I move that the town vote to transfer $100,000.0 from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve account. The Upton Affordable Housing Trust with funds to be used in accordance with CPA statutes and guidelines of the community housing.
Second?
Second.
Move in, seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
CPC recommendation?
Paul Carey, 6F from the Way, favorable.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Go ahead. Let's go.
Brian Gallagher, 108 Blount Ave. I'm the treasurer of the Affordable Housing Trust. I just want to take a moment to go through how these funds are planned to be used. The Affordable Housing Trust has reorganized after about a five-year hiatus at our first meeting at the end of August. And we quickly realized that there are a number of short-term priorities that we had to take immediate action on. The first is 28 Hafedad North. So we anticipate using these funds to determine how best to use that property. In the next month or two, we plan to go up with RFP and waiting for responses back. But we anticipate that we would have to have some work done on the site, legal fees, filing fees, and potentially any cost offsets to make that more attractive. And also, if you're not familiar with this property, it is an uninhabitable property. It's overgrown. We are having some problems with trespasses there, and it's an eyesore. And some of the butters, rightly so, are experiencing the pain of that. So we anticipate we'd have to demolish that building and prepare that site for development. The second use would be for, as we all know, we want to position ourselves so we are not at the mercy of developers coming in and putting any unfavorable 40 big. Right now, subsidized housing inventory positions ourselves where we are below that 10% goal. So we are subject to that. The most recent housing production plan was completed and approved by the board of selectmen in September. And the, part of that plan identified four potential properties. And those properties, we want to do feasibility for development as maybe it could be possible, which site is best used or any of them are possible for affordable housing. And we want to start that ball moving so we can start building our affordable housing up to that 10% goal.
Okay.
And the last use would be for part-time support, the trustees, five-member board. And we realized quickly that we need technical help, people that are familiar with affordable housing. Unfortunately, the regional housing, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has created a new position for the regional housing planning coordinator that we can tap into. And we'd like to use four hours a week of that person's time to help us over the next year, plan, what's the, help us with the roadmap and other activities that we anticipate doing this next year.
Great, thank you. Presentation. Good. Next question?
Actually, I have two questions.
Yep.
One is in reference to the previous speaker. The question was in regard to the wording on the article. It states that the Affordable Housing Trust would want to conduct pre-development activities supporting the development of affordable housing. Is it fair to say that is defined by what the previous speaker presented? That pre-development activities are what was described on the previous slide?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what your question is.
Can you go back to the, can you go back to the previous slide? No, that one, right there.
That one, okay.
So disposition of property, including site conditions, analysis of fees, and so on. Is that what is defined in this article by saying pre-development activities that support the development of affordable housing? Is it fair to say that that is the, is defined by this slide?
Well, I'm looking at the motion. It's from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve account to the Affordable Housing Trust with such funds to be used in accordance with the statutes. So to me, that's where the question comes in. So does what Mr. Gallagher talked about up there fall within the statutes and the guidelines for community housing? Is that what your question is?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Gallagher, if you could explain why that is?
Hopefully, I get your question. So the, we, we don't know what the RFP will come back as. So it may come back where it'd be housing, one single house. And so maybe move forward with that, and then that would be used for affordable housing. We may find out that best use is to sell it to just a single lot and then take those funds, put them back into the Affordable Housing Trust funds that can be then used for that potential second bullet, looking at one of those four sites. Or down the road, another site that we could use, working with another developer to build affordable housing. So those funds would, whether it's, it won't be that house, it's uninhabitable. But that site could be where we put in an affordable housing unit, or it could be sold, and then we'll use those funds for later affordable housing units. Did I follow you?
So, okay, right, okay, thank you. Is that okay, or?
So that was the first question I had. The second question I had was, this property that we're currently speaking about was purchased at auction at the end of 2017 by the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
And it was purchased as-is. Are there any plans to just simply sell it as-is?
Okay. Ms. Gallagher, it seems like a yes-no. I'm not sure if it's a simple as that, but...
Well, we'll be waiting for the RFPs to come back. If someone just said, opposing, take it as-is, that is a possibility.
All right, so we're not, so they're not sure yet, okay? That's the RFP.
That's correct.
Okay. Sir?
Natalie, 13 Whitney Lane. I just had a question. When I read the motion, it seems pretty open-ended for where the money will go. And I want to know if that money will have an impact in the proposed development of 47 Main Street.
Um, I'm sorry, 47 Main Street, what is that?
45.
Oh, okay, yeah. Boy, sorry. Got a lot of other numbers in my, in my head. Go ahead, Ms. Rattner.
Hi, I'm Kathy Robertson. I live on 59 Fowler Street, and I am chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. To answer your question, no, none of that funding will be spent on that particular property. The Affordable Housing Trust is looking forward to see what we can do in accordance with the type of housing that people in Upton want where they want it. And we will not be using it to reinvent the wheel of a property that's already in progress.
Okay, good. Anything else on this? Think we've finished up on that? Okay, so the motion is, as Mr. Gallagher stated, and he explained that, two questions, which is fine. So all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Okay, all those opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by majority. Okay, Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate $15,000 from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund for the purpose of creating a community preservation plan, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Okay, second?
Second.
Moved in, seconded. Thank you. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Great. CPC recommendation?
Favorable recommendations, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, this is, to prepare, the Community Preservation Plan. The Community Preservation Committee has been operating rather on an ad hoc basis, getting applications in and dealing with them. This would be to sort of map out what the Community Preservation Committee will be looking for for the next few years. So to find out what the town is hoping for, how we can better serve the town.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all hold up the green cards for yes. Okay, all those opposed, red cards. Motion carries by majority. Article 12, Affordable Housing Trust Action Plan.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $15,000.0 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Fund for the purpose of creating an Affordable Housing Trust Action Plan, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Second, moved in, seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
CPC recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable on both ends. Any discussion, questions?
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, well, we'll have her first, and then we'll go ahead. Yeah, no, that's all right.
I'll see her.
Thank you. Just a quick point, I want to make sure that folks in the back, if you're not able to hear, because I know the microphone up here seems like it's sort of spotty. If you're not able to hear something, just raise your hand, and we'll be on the lookout. And if your hand goes up, then we'll make sure we have someone repeat what they're saying. your hand goes up, then we'll make sure we have someone repeat what they're saying. Thanks, that's all.
Okay, thank you. How are things going in the back there?
Wonderful.
Can you hear me in those rows?
Yes.
Okay.
So they can hear you.
Right, I was, that was my second question. Can you hear the first one at the microphone, though?
No.
That's a little bit more difficult. Okay, then just speak a little bit louder, we'll see how that goes, okay?
Okay, I'm good at yelling.
Well, I didn't say that.
Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. This $15,000 would enable us to fund the preparation of an Affordable Housing Trust Action Plan. What that would do would provide clear goals and objectives for what we should do over the next five years in terms of how much housing we need, how, what types of housing we need, where that housing should be, how we should coordinate with local residents and developments, developers, to develop the, you know, to meet our 40B obligation and make it consistent with the Town of Upton Housing Production Plan, with the goals and objectives there. A big part of this is to help us identify resources to help us work with the community and to help us develop the toolbox, so we know what we have to do to move forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Good, opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by a majority. Article 13, Pratt Pond Mill Pond, conservation.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $50,000 and zero cents from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Reserve account to the Lakes and Ponds Committee for preparation of a management and water quality monitoring plan for Pratt Pond and Mill Pond.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
CPC recommendation?
Favorable, Mr. Moderator.
Favorable. Any questions? I see there's a nice picture up here, Pratt Pond Mill Pond. Any, if anyone's got questions, that's fine, but if not, that's okay too. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Okay, opposed, red cards. Motion carries by a majority. See Article 14.
Marcella Stasha, 211 North Street.
Little louder, please.
Marcella Stasha, 211 North Street. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $5,000 and zero cents from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Reserve account to the Land Stewardship Committee to repair a trail bridge at the Warren Brook Water Conservation Area, including all expenses incidental and related thereto.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Have the card, please. Do I have the card, please? Thank you, that's okay. Moved in second by Fincom, thank you. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Community preservation?
Favorable action.
Favorable. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Motion carries unanimously. Before we go to the next article, I have a question on this if I could. It says that there's going to be some volunteer people helping out. Do you still need volunteers for this, or is that all set?
We can always use volunteers, yes.
Okay, so, once this thing's starting to happen, make sure you let people know, put it on the website, stuff like that, okay?
Okay.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, great. Where am I? Fifteen, right? Yes, Article 15.
Gary Strickards, 9 Watford Avenue. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $4,500 and zero cents from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Reserve account to the Lakes and Ponds Committee for purchase of water quality sampling and testing equipment and analytical services for water quality samples.
Second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Fincom recommendation?
Favorable.
Fair watch by the Fincom. Is this CPC?
Favorable action.
Favorable action by the CPC. Any discussion? Explanation up there? Okay. All right, seeing no questions and no discussion, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Thank you, opposed, hold up the red cards. Okay, motion carries unanimously. So, who wants to read Article 16? Mr. Simas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the general zoning bylaws by replacing Board of Selectmen with Select Board as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. If I have the chat, please, thank you very much. Since this is a change to the zoning bylaw, in addition to the town bylaw, it will require a two-thirds majority vote. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Okay, all opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by two-thirds majority. Thank you very much for your honest vote over there, I appreciate that. Okay, Article 17. Who's going to make this one? You, good, Mr. Simas, you drew the straw, okay.
Hey, it was our right idea. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for the enactment of the special legislation entitled, an amendment, an act amending special acts, of the Town of Upton to change the name of the Upton Board of Selectmen to the Upton Select Board as printed in the warrant.
Sorry.
The second moved in seconded. Thank you very much. Now, this does not require two-thirds, it's only a majority vote because it's something that the state has to do, it simply requires a couple minutes ago, you told me that earlier, thank you very much, sir. And, okay, any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Opposed, red cards. Thank you very much, majority vote. Okay, 18. No solicitation, go ahead, yeah.
I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaw, Chapter 235, entitled Soliciting, Canvassing, and Peddling, to include no solicitation registry as printed in the warrant.
Okay, second?
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? If I could ask, only because this is important, obviously, everything's important, it would be good to explain what is on it, what is not on it. Is there somebody who can talk about that?
I can talk to that, Mr. Moderator. I don't have the specific language.
That's fine.
But essentially, what this would prevent is it would allow, it would just prevent random solicitation. So kids under 18 for the schools. Do you realize that I can do that as well? Kids, religious, and politicians would still be allowed to door it off. If you put your name on the no solicitation registry, it would prevent people from selling things from coming to your door. Driveway people, roofers. Unfortunately, I think we can, we can all attest, we had, the Select Board has had complaints where people have been home and they have, people, solicitators have walked around the backyard, they scared their children, so you would have to opt-in. You would have to call the town hall and say, "I do not want anyone coming on my property." That's the purpose of this registry.
Okay, I kind of thought that's what it was, but it'd be good to say what is allowed and what is not allowed, so, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Moderator?
Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street. I think it's a great idea. You know, sometimes people come at nighttime and it's really can get pretty scary, but my question is, and I guess this is more to KP Law, it seems like such a good idea, I don't know why other towns haven't done it, is it legal?
No. Kelpin and Paige, you want to address that? Sure, well, wait till the bike gets stopped, man.
Good evening, Brian Mazur from KP Law. Yes, it's been placed in other bylaws in other communities, so it's appropriately before this town meeting on this warrant.
Great, okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, oh, okay, yeah, sure.
I'm not against either, just curious, how does it work? What, do you call the police if someone shows up at your door, and then a trespassing, like, what's the process?
Okay, so, what's the process to get on, and what's the process in case somebody didn't bother to read and they're at your door?
Correct, you can go to the town hall and check.
There you go. I think the chief's coming right down now to help with that.
I'm so sorry.
All right, chief.
We are going to call the police.
Thank you, chief.
Basically, the way it works now is for commercial solicitation, you have to apply for a permit through the police department. We do background checks, we issue that solicitation permit. If this bylaw passes, we will then give them a copy of the registry, and those are the places that they're not allowed to solicit. If they do, we can revoke the permit for any other kind of things that's just not in our state's.
So if we call and we're on the west and they show up at our house, we give you a call?
That's correct.
Thank you, okay, thank you very much, great. Okay, good. Anything else? Good. I'm glad I had you guys talk about it, because this, we need to know how it works, so that's good. All right, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. All those opposed, hold up the red cards. Motion carries by a majority.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Upton Wetlands Protection Bylaw, Chapter 280, as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Second, moved in seconded. If you could just take a minute and explain what this is at the microphone, please, thank you very much.
All right, so there's a couple, there's actually some inconsistencies, so I would like to point out that this is what's in the regs. If you read the bottom line in the yellow, it says that the commission does not require a butter notification for the filing of an RRDA, which is a request for determination of applicability, since these projects are typically minor projects. So an example of a minor project would be replacing a septic system, cutting trees down, putting up a retaining wall. These are not big projects. The bylaw, if we can go to the slide which shows the language in the bylaw, if there is one, didn't put that out, okay. It's in your warrant, folks.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. You don't have to say everything, just give us a sense of, a general gist of what this does, that's all.
And so in the bylaw, it's actually written that it is required to have a butter notification for a request for determination. So it's just complex, so we'd just like to clarify this, so it's the regs say one thing, the bylaw says another. So that's the first portion, and then the another is just removing the cap for fees, because our fees are currently at the highest amount. And then the final one is just changing one year to three years for extensions, so it's just giving people longer time on their permit.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Got a couple of votes?
Hi. Hello.
Please, yeah.
Anne Swazow, 36 Miller Street. That is a little confusing, and it's a little unusual to amend something like that. Taking away the checks and balances of our government and transparency for property owners not to know what's going on, to get a butter notification. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Craig Wong, 11 Hazel Time Road. I have three points to bring up about this. The first is, I believe in Section 40, Chapter 131 of the Wetlands Protection Act, it states that it's a requirement to give notice of intent to butters, so this is, so this proposed change would be in conflict with the Wetlands Protection Act law, which is a state law. And also, I believe citizens have ten days to appeal an ORAD, so if butters are not notified, then they would not be able to appeal, so that would, I think that would be a problem. And the other point is that it says in the explanation of the warrant article that determinations are minor in nature. I think that's inherently subjective, and some people may not necessarily agree with what is minor in nature and what is not minor in nature, so just in summary, a butter notification, I think, in my personal opinion, are a positive thing, and it's really no harm to notify a butter. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, if you could just, you know what, I think it would be good if the sponsor could make a few comments first and then we'll go from there. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd like to provide further explanation. So there's several different types of wetlands permits, the notice of intent, the wetland recreation, this does not affect that, or not, we can't change that because that is a state law, as we said. So this only affects requests for determination. Notice of intents are for much larger projects such as the 40, you know, the big project on Main Street. Most single-family houses are under a notice of intent. Any subdivision falls under a notice of intent. Notice of intents always will require a butter notification. The other types of projects which require a butter notification is an ORAD, and this has come up in the 40B discussion for 47 Main Street. There was an ORAD dominant, and ORAD will always require a butter notification as well under the state law. So this is only a change for requests for determination. What a request is, it's basically asking the commission, do I have to file a notice of intent, is basically what that is. And so if a notice of intent is necessary, then there would have to be a butter notification.
Thank you. Sir?
At early 13 Whitting Lane, I appreciate the clarification given by the previous speaker, but my question is, if there is an ORAD and the butters are not notified, what does the town do?
Is that a question for the town selectman, or the town manager, or maybe? Kelpin and Paige, what?
I can't hear you.
Okay, you know what, could you say the question again, because I'm not quite sure where that question needs to go yet.
Okay. My question is, when an ORAD is issued and the butters are supposed to be noticed, what does our town do if that doesn't happen?
Okay, if someone's supposed to be notified according to the law, but they're not, and does this address that at all, is that your question?
No, I don't care, but address, I'm just simply asking, what does the town do?
So that, so that question has got nothing to do with this? And I don't know the answer to that, because I'm just moderating this right now. Okay.
Okay, but I just thought, one more thing, if it doesn't apply here, who can I talk to to find out how we should apply the regulations that we have in place? That's all I'm asking, how do we apply them?
Okay.
Go to the town hall, town meeting, town manager, anybody.
Okay, town hall, I guess.
Julie, the town manager, I recommend stopping by. You can also set up staff meetings in order to learn more about existing regulations and processes than the town has.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Andrews?
Bill Andrews, 84 High Street, Upton. I'm not hearing your question.
That's fine, I.
Having just paid for building my house, that I've.
Oh, sure.
I've notified butters, and it's seven or eight hundred dollars every time you have to do that. We require that the mail be certified, the state law does not. We could amend our bylaws to have the department send it out and just pay for that cost to be like a pocket piece instead of eight hundred dollars every time we notify somebody. So there's a financial burden that is placed for people that have to do their septic system, they sometimes have to spend an extra seven or eight hundred dollars for no reason, where if it's done, you could have our own clerks do it for fifty bucks.
Does this deal with that, or is that a separate thing? Okay, fine, but it is a point somewhat related to these sorts of things. Okay, I think we're done with the article, with the motion for Article 19. I don't see any other people coming forward. So, so again, this is to make adjustments, to change the Upton Wetlands Protection Bylaw according to what the motion was, and seeing no more discussion, I will now ask. And this is only a majority vote, because the Upton Wetlands Protection Bylaw is in the general bylaws. So, all those in favor, hold up the green cards. Okay, opposed, red cards. You know what? We have to have standing votes, folks, because it is too close, okay? So, in the past, I've asked a number of people to help me out with standing votes, and if some of those folks are around and they'd like to come forward, I would appreciate that, okay? Is there anybody here who's helped me in the past with voting? Okay, Mr. Andrews, okay, you can come forward. Okay, she can get down here. That would be great. Anyone else who would like to help with the voting? I have some usual suspects out there. I'm not gonna call you out. I know you've helped me before. Thank you very much, man. Okay. Oh, you're sitting right now? Okay, good. Thank you. I just need one more person to come forward and help with this. Mr. Rocketton, could you give me a hand with this? Thank you, sir.
See, we got the teachers coming.
That's true. Good thing this isn't an educational question, is it? Okay. All right, Mr. Rocketton, why don't you go over here?
Okay.
And what I'm gonna do is give you guys a pencil and a piece of paper, if you need it. Anybody need pencils or pieces of paper? Anybody? Okay? Pencil. I can get you a bigger one than that. There you go. That'll work. Okay, you guys need paper? Need some pencils? So, we haven't done this in a while. This is what I want you folks to do. So, I want you guys to deal with this side and this side in the back over here. Okay? And the front. Okay? So this side, this side in the back and the front. Okay? I want, Mr. Rocketton, you guys deal with center, that side in the back, and this side over here. And the pink card. Okay, you got that? Good. So, what we'll do. All those in favor, please stand. And stay standing until I say you can sit down. And I'm not voting, any guys, okay? I am not voting. You guys are over here. You guys, you two. I'm not voting. I'm not voting. So you two all seated on this? You two concur? We're good. Sit down, please. Again, I'm not voting on this. All those opposed, please stand. Everyone set? Okay, I want to remind the counters to count yourselves, okay, before you give me the final numbers. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. You agree? Yep, so how many, yes? Thank you very much.
That's great.
Okay. Okay, the vote is in favor, fifty-one, opposed, thirty-nine. So the motion does pass by a majority. Thank you very much. Great. Okay, good. Article twenty. Okay, this deals with the solar panel question.
No, no. No, that's next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Principal uses, thank you very much. Yeah, okay, got it. Go ahead.
Kathy Robertson, fifty-nine Follast Street. I move that the town vote to amend Chapter thirty, Section, I mean, Chapter three-hundred, Section three-hundred, dash, three, dot, one, Table of Principal Uses of the Town of Upton Zoning Bylaws as printed on the warrant.
Agreed.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Does the planning board have a recommendation on this?
Planning board voted to recommend.
Okay, thank you. So if I could just have the motion card? Thank you. Okay, and again, since this is a zoning bylaw amendment, if it does require two-thirds majority vote? Ms. Robertson?
I just wanted to provide a brief overview. This bylaw change is intended to clean up confusion over what is allowed by right in the Upton Center Business District and what requires a special permit. For example, a fitness club is allowed by right, while a fitness center requires a special permit. A beauty shop, day spa, and massage therapist are allowed by right. An esthetician requires a special permit. A bicycle repair shop is allowed by right. While biking and pedestrian facilities require a special permit. The slide on the screen shows some of the overlaps, and quite frankly, a lot of them don't make sense. You can have fitness clubs, but you can't have gyms. So what the Economic Development Committee determined that there was substantial overlap and conflict, the planning board agreed. The proposed zoning bylaw change seeks to correct for those errors as an administrative cleanup of the bylaw language. The change presumes to reflect what the original intent of the Upton Center Business District is.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Okay. Sir?
Yeah, I'll just shout.
No, no, no. Thank you. I get through at least one meeting, but no one's shouting. So thank you, sir.
Well, it was just to shout to make myself heard.
Thank you. I was there.
So, Sandy Furman, I live on Pearl Street, forty-one Pearl Street, Upton. I don't really see a rhyme and reason for why, for the items on column A and the items on column B. I just don't see it. So I'm not quite sure what the, I don't know what the point is of what we currently have. I don't understand what it is we're trying to do. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, so Ms. Robertson, if you could state that, please.
Just to clarify, Paul Gary is sitting here. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, things that are allowed by right means that a person can come in or a business can come in and set up shop by right. They don't need to go through the planning board. Special permit means they have to go through a process and speak and seek a special permit through the planning board. So they are not allowed to do it by right. Does that answer your question?
But I don't see any logic.
Well, yeah, so...
Yeah, I mean, that was the point of this, is it cleans up. It just cleans it up. So everything on this list would be allowed by right. So you wouldn't have two lists. It's just everything would be allowed by right, and the second list wouldn't have to go through a special permit.
Okay.
Now I understand.
Very, very good. Thank you. Beautiful. That's why we have town meetings. To ask questions and get answers, and then vote on things. Looks like we're ready to vote. Okay. Again, two-thirds required. All those in favor of the amendments to, hold your red cards, hold your green cards up, I'm sorry. Thank you. All set? Opposed, red cards. Who passes by two-thirds? Thank you. Okay, Article twenty-one. Before we have the motion for Article twenty-one, I want Dave, is it Antonell's?
Mike Antonell's.
Oh, Mike Antonell, sorry. Because there's a guy in town named Dave Antonell, so Mike, okay.
Unrelated.
What he's gonna do in the next minute or so is explain to you why one acre is only forty thousand square feet. Go ahead.
So, yeah, the question was posed by moderator just before town meeting tonight on his brother's confusion as to the bullet number two. You see, there are twenty acres, and then in parentheses, no more than eight hundred thousand square feet. The reason, and for those of you who may not be familiar, those who are familiar, an acre is actually forty-three thousand five hundred, forty-two thousand five hundred sixty square feet.
About.
Exactly. And in the Upton zoning bylaw, a multiple acre per the zoning districts are rounded down to an even forty thousand square feet. So as a part of the planning board's motion, when they were seeking to make clarification and amendments to the proposed bylaw, was to make things consistent. And so that's why you see a twenty-acre maximum equalling eighty thousand square feet, because that is, you know, twenty acres times forty thousand equals eight hundred thousand. So if there's a difference, if this question has to, you know, multiplying twenty times the forty-three thousand, you end up with a bit of a difference. So.
That's it.
Just seeks to be consistent throughout the document.
Thank you very much. So, that's it. I wanted to explain that. I don't want any of your questions about what an acre is. I wanted to explain that right now at the beginning. Go ahead, make the motion.
Margaret Carroll, Forty-Eighth Oak Drive. I move that the Town of Upton, the Town vote to amend the Town of Upton Zoning Bylaws, Chapter three-hundred, Section three-hundred, dash, three-point-one, Table of Principal Uses, and Chapter three-hundred, three-hundred, dash, six-point-six, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Voltae Installations, as set forth in the warrant, with the following further amendments. The phrase in proposed Section three-hundred, six-point-six-point-one, threes, that reads, "No less than one hundred thirty thousand six hundred eighty square feet" shall be deleted and replaced with "No less than one hundred twenty thousand square feet." And the phrase in proposed three-hundred, six-point-six, three-hundred, six-point-six-point-one, Section three, that reads, "And a maximum lot size of ten acres in size, no more than four hundred thirty-five thousand eight hundred sixty square feet," shall be deleted and replaced with "And a maximum lot size of twenty acres, no more than eight hundred thousand square feet." And proposed Section three-hundred, six-point-six-point-one, Section four, that reads, "The portion of the parcel used for all large-scale ground-mounted solar voltai installations within the AR zoning district must have been previously cleared from trees for a period of at least five years prior to the submission of the project for approval, shall be deleted and replaced with, 'The portion of the parcel used for all large-scale ground-mounted solar voltai installations within the AR zoning district must be substantially cleared from trees over two-inch caliper for a period of at least five years prior to the submission of the project for approval.'"
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Okay. Before we continue any further, give me a minute to just explain something. Okay. The very first paragraph that's up there, just focus on that for right now. If you look at your warrant, okay? If you have a warrant, and hopefully you do. When it says Article twenty-one, all the stuff from Article twenty-one, the next page that goes through this whole array, all the way to the back page up through number two, okay? That very first paragraph totally focuses on that stuff, okay? Now, after that, there's a Section three, "All large-scale ground-mounted, et cetera." That's what these three sections deal with. After the article was written and posted, okay? There were some changes made to some of the numbers. And that's what these three things deal with. And if you look at that paragraph that's in able three, the numbers are different on the article as they are here. I want to make sure you understand that before we have any more discussion about it. Okay? So again, the very top paragraph deals with the first eighty percent of what's on the article. These last things here deal with number changes to number three, essentially. I wanted to make sure you were aware of that as you're looking at this and as the discussion comes about. And again, as Mike said earlier, you've gotta accept the fact that one acre is forty thousand square feet and not try to go beyond that at home, okay? So having said that, I hope that's kind of clear what you're looking at. Let's have some discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Antonell, Director of Land Use and Inspection Services. And just to piggyback on what you just said, there was also a handout that was presented tonight, so the folks grabbed it. It provided an explanation as to these amendments that you see...
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, good.
...for you tonight.
Yep.
And so those are obviously the amendments that were through the planning board's vote, was to vote in favor of, three to two, and with those amended changes to the motion.
Okay.
So, I'll try to keep this as brief as I can tonight. Just gonna go through a little one-page right here. Whereas the previous practice by cities and towns was to adopt certain zoning districts which permitted large-scale solar, new case law suggests that towns do not have the ability to restrict solar as they once did. In East Longmatto, two thousand nineteen, the land court ruled that protections afforded under solar energy systems are similar to the protections afforded to schools, churches, and childcare facilities. As some of you might be familiar, that's in reference to Chapter forty A, Section three, which is referenced just there below, where the state law takes time to note exempt uses from zoning. That's what that's in reference to. In Waltham, two thousand twenty-two, the courts determined that only one to two percent of land was not adequate to adhere to the protections afforded in MGL forty A, Section three. Tracer Lane also affirms the ability for towns to regulate this use. Just not so that it would be unreasonable, the regulations would not be unreasonable, and that the regulations would not function as de facto prohibition of the use. Also, that the, all regulations applied must be tied to public health, safety, and welfare, as our zoning bylaws typically do. In reviewing these cases, town council's opinion was that towns' abilities to require special permits is still very much intact. So that is what is before town meeting tonight, is the expansion of this use allowable by special permit, meaning it requires a formal public hearing with notices, as we discussed earlier in another article, notices going out to neighbors who might be impacted by a proposed ORAD. So going through the formal process, making sure it adheres to special permit criteria, formal public hearing, folks notified who were nearby. The task, the task before the planning board was to enact regulations that were tied to public health, safety, and welfare without being considered unreasonable or overly restrictive. The board offered the following addition... The board offered the following additional regulations on large-scale solar when expanding to the AR district. 100-foot setback from all sides. This was to mimic the current regulations that are set forth in the current bylaw, which is for the commercial and industrial district. Because the setbacks listed in that district require that if it's near a residence or residential district, it must be 100 foot, 100 feet from all sides. So that is taken and applied here going forward. A three-acre minimum lot size for newly proposed uses. This was modeled after Wareham's language, intended to prevent for proliferation of smaller-sized arrays amongst established residential uses. As new residential lots in the AR district must have a two-acre minimum or 80,000 square feet.
Yes.
20-acre maximum lot size, not array size. This was, as was previously noted, expanded from 10 acres for a maximum lot size. And the reason behind that was that there were substantial swaths of land in town that are existing, it pertains to the next bullet point, that are existing cleared. And that would be potential good locations for this type of development. And by limiting it to a 10-acre maximum might be considered by the Attorney General's Office as overly restrictive. And we might not get that passed through review for the Attorney General's Office. So that's why it was increased to 20 maximum. The five-year minimum land clearing requirement. This is for the express purpose to reduce clearcutting. It was, you know, said again and again, this is, I think everybody's main concern, I don't mean to speak for everybody, but a lot of people were being concerned regarding this type of use, which is clearcutting land for the purpose of solar energy. That tends to rub everybody the wrong way, I personally don't like it either, nor do I professionally. But the, so that is what that is intended to prevent, again, without being considered to be overly restrictive so that the AG's office might reject that provision. Yes, slide three, please. And slide three is just for reference, showing you the zoning map. The, if you can see it, the pink area on either side of town, left and right, off of 140, those are the, that's the CNI district, commercial industrial, yes, right there. And then to the left, right where you are, yes, there. The CNI district, that is currently where large-scale solar is allowed by, by right and by special permit. And then the green is the AR district, agricultural residential. That's where it would be allowed by, again, by special permit only, formal public hearing, folks notified, adhering to the criteria of special permits. And that is it. I'll.
Okay, thank you. Good. Yes, any other discussion, questions?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to say I'm a member of the planning board and I support this article. Had you asked me five years ago, I probably would not have. But the reality is we're in a climate crisis and we don't have time to wait. One of the things that I really like about this article is that it doesn't allow for cutting of trees because that is contrary to taking down carbon storage to try to reduce carbon production. So that's a strength. Another strength is it is not a by-right situation. So it is a special permit, which means that there will be public hearings, as Mike said. I, it's time that we move forward on this type of plan. And there are several places in town that we can all probably think of, you know, places like the South Street Sandbits, that meet these criteria and would be an excellent location for a solar farm.
Kathy Robertson, again, 59 Fowler Street, and a member of the planning board, chair of the planning board. As folks may have guessed, this article prompted spirited discussion at the planning board. I think we all agree there is a crisis and some, you know, things, steps have to be taken to limit the use of fossil fuels. But the impetus of this bylaw change was the threat of litigation. Because if somebody wants to put solar cells in and the town's bylaws are not permissive enough, and as folks can see in the commercial industrial area, if you looked at that slide, that's only in certain sections of town, I think it's slightly over 3%, then we can be sued. I do not personally think that the threat of lawsuit is a good reason to make public policy. But in any case, to put 70%, about more than 70% of our land to make that, you know, potential sites for solar arrays is disturbing to me. And it's my understanding that if indeed we are sued, what has happened in the past is that the Attorney General's Office then says, well, go and create a more permissive bylaw. So there is time to do that. So what my argument has been all along is I don't like to compromise our fields. I don't like compromising our open space, you know, for these massive solar arrays. That's my personal opinion. And I think that, you know, by putting this, there's a big difference between saying, you can put them in these select areas, this three-point, this less than 4% of your county area, or laying out the wealth of that and say, come and put them anywhere you want. So I oppose this amendment change. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Perry, also a member of the planning board. I think the prior two speakers gave a good. Oh, sorry. I think the prior two speakers gave a good explanation of the debate that went on of the planning board and on the big picture, you know, the pros and cons. I have one small issue with the article that I'm hoping we can fix, and it's one that you brought up. In that bullet point number two, you talk about 20 acres, no more than 800,000 square feet. An acre isn't 40,000 square feet.
You're right, it is.
I think that the language would do exactly what the proponents of the article want if we take that last line of number two and just have a read, and a maximum lot size of no more than 800,000 square feet. Then we're dealing with 20, 40,000 square foot building lots. And I think that that's, I would make that as a friendly amendment.
Well, so what is it that you want to, so be real specific. What do you want to do?
If we go back, I would make a friendly amendment
Yeah.
to change the amendment language in bullet point number two
Yeah.
to read, "And a maximum lot size of no more than 800,000 square feet."
So basically you're saying, take out 20 acres.
That is correct, and the parentheses.
Right, so remove 20 acres and both parentheses.
That is correct.
Okay, so this is what I'm going to do. Given the fact that this evening, for some reason, one acre is 40,000 square feet and not 43,000 whatever, okay, taking that language out means that we're talking about 800,000 square feet, period.
Correct, which I think is the correct read of it as it is. It's just the words 20 acres may be confusing.
And that can add, and that, not only that, somebody might say down the road, well, no, 20 acres is 800 whatever
That's correct.
100,000 square feet. Okay, so this is what we're going to do. If there are, so this isn't a question about whether you're favorable or against this. This is a question of, does anybody object to the fact that, given the fact that one acre is only 40,000 square feet, does anybody object to the fact that we should remove the 20 acres and the parentheses and change the language to just make it 800,000 square feet? Does anyone object to that? Because it just makes sense, given the situation we have. I was going to ask that next, okay? So, Mr. Mazur, you understand what we're talking about right now?
Yes.
So from a legal point of view, us taking those things out is certainly would seem to me like it would be legal because all we're doing is saying it's 800,000 square feet, period.
Is it.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much. So if no one objects to that, we'll have that in there. There's no need to vote on it because there's no one that objected to it. So now we go back to talking about it in terms of the whole picture.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Kennedy, 22, Hazelton Road.
Yeah.
So I assume that the permitting process, this permit would have to pass no RAN and RAD?
Well, Ms. Carroll can answer.
If it's in a wetland.
So the ORAD and RAD piece is in the Wetlands Protection Act. This is the planning board.
So we.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So there's an item three. If I own 800,000 square feet of land currently
Yeah.
and someone came to me and said, I will buy it. I'll sign the PNS right now, or you got to start clearcutting it so when I go for my permits in five years, I can get it. If there's no, if, if there's no wetland study done on this, ever, who's ever living downhill from this property is going to get washed up.
Okay, I, I don't know if anyone else wants to try to address that concern. Ms. Carroll?
I guess the only way I can address that concern is to say that the Wetlands Protection Act, all of the provisions of the Wetlands Protection Act remain in place. So if someone were to do that and there's wetlands, it would be illegal, just as it is now, if they do something like that. If they clear a wetland without, without getting permits, it is illegal. It would be, it would violate the state law and the town law.
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
So it may not be wetland currently, but when you take the tree zone and it starts to flow, it could end up here.
Okay. Ms. Carroll, the final on this?
So wetlands are, are regulated based on the vegetation, the community that's there, the plant community that's there, and the soils that are there. That's how wetlands are defined under the State Wetlands Protection Act and under the Town of Upton bylaw.
Yep.
And so removing, removing the trees does not actually make something into a wetland. It does increase amount of runoff. There's, there's no arguing there, but it doesn't actually turn it into a wetland.
Well, a point, because there's someone in mind or if it's with respect to something we need to clean up here real quick before the next speaker.
Yeah, it's just a point of clarification. I think I know what you're getting at. And if somebody does come in to a project or to a parcel land and says, I want you to clearcut it now for something that's going to happen five years down the pipe, the permitting for the solar array wouldn't be happening until five years down the pipe. So whatever the wetlands conditions at that five years down the pipe, those are the ones that are applied, not the wetlands' conditions when the fire comes in with the intent to do something in five years. I think that's what the question was.
That's, that's a fair point. So let's move on. Next one?
I'll be quick. In it, bro, three, every circle, I know I should know this, but if, when there is a permit application and there's a public hearing, are butters fervently informed of that?
Yes.
I'm nodding, thank you.
It sounds like I'm hearing justice to that question. Is that true? Yes.
Barsha Kozlowski, 10 Whitney Lane. Is there anything in here to protect the town? For instance, if you have 20 acres of solar panels, and if you watch the business news, there's a lot of solar companies going belly up and not doing very well right now. Is there anything where solar panels go end of life or the company goes belly up? And we have these solar panels, is there going to be an account where they have to put in money or something so we can clean up the hazardous waste that's left?
So you have a great big solar farm, something goes belly up, what happens?
Right.
Okay.
And the panels only have, it used to be 20-year life. I don't know what they are now. And I know people that tried to get rid of them and it was very expensive and very difficult. And that was only a couple, not 20 acres.
Sure. Okay, take care of him.
Yes, in the current bylaw, in which this will not seek to change what I'm about to say, which is there is a requirement to provide a surety bond that will cover the decommissioning of any defunct solar, let's say.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at all?
Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, please.
I just have a comment to make as a citizen. You aren't going to go to that?
No, no, that's all right. Thank you for saying that, but you can use that microphone there.
This one?
There you go.
So I just want to let folks know that this is absolutely as a resident of the community, not in my position as a board. I'm Brett Simonus. I live at Seven Barbers Path in Upton. Putting in large solar farms is a critical part of supporting the environment and what everybody's trying to do, and I think a lot of us understand that. This is about where we place those and what we do with them. I look at a town like Northbridge, where they've clearcut tremendous tracts of land to put in these solar farms. They've taken over these farms and put in these solar farms. You see one right up off of William Street. The states realizing, and industry is realizing, that there are a lot of places to put solar panels that don't require and have an adverse effect on the environment. You can put them on top of municipal buildings. You put them over existing impervious material like parking lots, like we did over at Misco Hill School. So there are lots of places to put these types of facilities to support the greening that we're all in support of. To go from, I mean, I think of a large-scale full solar farm as a commercial and industrial installation. That's why we set up the bylaw to support these developments in a commercial and industrial space. Opening it up to another 80% of the town that's our agricultural space to allow for large-scale solar installations in response to a very few number of, or literally a person that's threatening to sue us doesn't seem like the right impetus to make a change like this. And even if it were, I don't think this is the right change for us to make for the town and what we're trying to do. We're all about open space. We're about nature. We're about the community. And I don't think that these are things that folks want to look at. Let's put solar panels above the school, on all the schools, on the municipal buildings, above parking lots, et cetera. I'm not sure we want them showing up in our fields.
Okay. Any other questions on this? I, I just would like a comment from Mr. Mazur, if you could. It's been stated by a few people about risk liability that the community has or might have if we do nothing or if we maybe do something. So is there some sort of a legal thing that we should be considering as we look at this question? Does that question make sense? Like other towns have done this and other towns who haven't done things like this, what sort of legal issues have they maybe had to deal with? If you can address that question.
Mr. Moderator,
Yeah.
I would say that this is something that other communities have implemented in amendments they've made relative to solar for the purposes that have already been communicated by members of the planning board. They conferred with a colleague of mine prior to making these amendments. So again, I think that for purposes of amending, amending the zoning bylaw in this, this chapter of the bylaw, that it's appropriate to do so.
Okay, in terms of legality, it, it will protect the town?
Yes.
Is that, okay, fine. All right, all right, fine. All right, good. Any other questions or discussion on this? So again, this does require a two-thirds majority vote. You've had a good discussion on this, both sides to see on this. So, and again, I hope you have a good understanding of what it is that you're voting for. And if not, you have to still ask one question. So having said that, so again, two-thirds, solar panels, the law that, and what we're talking about. So all those in favor, hold up your green cards. So all those in favor, hold up your green cast. Okay? All those opposed, hold up your red cast. This does not pass by a two-thirds majority vote. Okay, before, before we adjourn, I've said this a few times now, the last few years, and I just got to tell you, I, what we do is so important. You're a legislative body for the town of Upton, Massachusetts. We get together once or twice a year, talk about real important things, we make decisions, we get things done, and I appreciate that a great deal. Thank you to all of you and everyone else who gets this town meeting ready and at work. So thanks a lot. And we have a motion to adjourn, I think?
Kathy Robertson, 59 Fowler Street. I move to dissolve the warrant and adjourn the 2023 special town meeting.
Thank you. For a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously to dissolve the meeting. Thank you very much, folks.